We are now live.
But I don't see Corinne.
Hi.
No, I don't. I only see Simon, Dave and myself.
Are you scrolling? There's little white arrows?
There's little arrows going to the left and right.
If you go over the top of those video screens, you can change the way the videos are placed in the grid.
That's all right. As long as we're hearing. Okay. She's with me. I don't want to slow everybody down.
You ready?
I am.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the March 31st, 2020 work session, and we will start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Thank you. Dave, if you'd like to call roll?
Dunaway?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes, here.
Mr. Patrick?
Here.
This is Akor.
Here.
I apologize, Teresa, for not saying Mrs. Dunaway at the beginning. We are all here, present and accounted for, ma'am. There is a forum this evening.
Great. Thank you. So new business, Dr. Convy, I assume this is your item?
It is. So new business A is a Blizzard Bag E-Day Amendment. And on that, with the coronavirus, we were fortunate as a district that we were able to we were able to have Blizzard Bag in place. And when that's the case, that gives us three additional days. Blizzard Bag slash E-Day, Electronic Day. So it has been advised through Brick and Eckler and through the state that if you, and through our governor, that we need to look at that now that we have this mandate for the closure all the way up through May 1st, and it could extend, that then we would do a resolution that would amend our original Blizzard Bag slash E-Day and update that for this particular situation. And Brick and Eckler has helped us with that, and so that is attached. So this is the recommendation, recommend to approve amended the district's calamity day plan to include provisions pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code Section 3313.482 and amend Sub-House Bill 197 stating that TIPS City Schools Board of Education desires that students have learning opportunities even when schools are closed for any of the reasons specified in the ORC Section 3313.482, including an epidemic. And then the larger document goes into basically that this will supersede the Blizzard Bag and E-Day resolution that we had prior.
So we need a first and a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Dunaway and Dahl. Any discussion? Seeing that there's none, ready for a vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Akor?
Yes. All right, thank you. Oh, Teresa?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was working on my thing. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. So, item A under discussion items is coronavirus plan update, and you'll see an attachment there with that. And I wanted to just highlight some things in that. I've been trying to include portions of this each week in the Friday board update, but certainly I wanted to look at some of the particular categories of like continuity of operations. And in that, certainly our payroll continues to be on pace with that, as well as they are training essentially two staff members in the payroll department during this time. And I know that that's a bit of a challenge, but they're working through that. I also wanted to know just continuity of operations under that is the one call is continuing to be used and it's functional, it's up to date. We do push out more than 6,000 calls when we do an all call. And a text message component has now been implemented. It will take a little practice with that so that that once again, it has to be abbreviated, we need to have it 160 characters or less and to figure out when is the best time to use that. So that piece is in place. And then the continuity of education, once again, we are working with our teachers and really with making sure that they have available information that they need to have, the online learning system. We are working with the Google Classroom is what we're moving toward. Right now, we're finishing that second week of materials that we had right when we first departed that were put, placed together and planned for right before our dismissal, and that was all the way at on March 16th was our first day of that, but then we had the the spring break in between there. So our three weeks, we are now on the third week of that, and that is underway. We continue to use teleconferencing and video conferencing, doing a lot of Zoom meetings. I should be better at this, but I am getting better. Zoom meetings, as well as the the Google Hangouts, doing a lot of that with the administration as well, and those seem to be going well. And instruction is occurring remotely, and we are providing that and also looking about how that will continue and also some additional components to that as we move beyond the week as we begin in April, April 6th. And then a survey, we did conduct a survey to collect information and data on students and families that what their connectivity was, whether they did not have any device, but they did have internet access and those that do not even have any internet access. So we're preparing to act on that and looking at that as well. The distance learning guidelines, I'm going to come back to that and actually have Mr. Verhoff assist me on that matter. A lot of work has gone into that, but I'm going to continue just for a little bit on just our our plan update, just long-term availability. They called the short-term availability that was in the previous plan that I had shared with you. That was really when you get up to about two weeks, and then when you move beyond that, and I think now as we're moving up to and through May 1st, and then still the uncertainty of whether that's going to be extended, we're really moving into more of a long-term availability. So how we are proceeding with all of that. The local library happens to be one of the pieces down there. Certainly our interconnection with them is positive, and and they're providing some things for the community, but their doors are closed as well, and they are doing things remotely. So the things that we will be doing with them will be through a remote nature. And then special education services, there's certainly the guidance that's coming from ODE. I know Mr. Verhoff's been involved in a number of webinars, keeping on top of that. Certainly anything that happens to be in some of those larger webinars, such as the one that Mrs. Akor had mentioned earlier this evening with Brick and Eckler, I noticed that there were well over 500 people that were attending that across the state. So those kind of things, they did hit on a number of big and important topics, and certainly special education and services with part of that. And certainly our House Bill 197, it has some components in there as well. And so we look at all those things and try to stay very much on top of it. As you know, with House Bill 197, there are a number of aspects that are looked at and some of these deadlines that had been there are now changed and extended way out. As we move to the next page, just the aspect of the student food service, wanted to just highlight that that we are following the Department of Agriculture's guidelines and have been able to access a program. And we were able to submit for the summer seamless program and the funds for that. And we're very, very happy to be approved for that. Mr. Fister's done a great job on that for us. I do want to thank Renee Johnson and Carol English that does work through Community Services, but Renee Johnson, Margaret Dorn, there's a whole crew that are assisting with the the school student lunch program, and that is going well. We have gone to a one day per week for five meals so that that would cover for the week. Many school districts in the area have gone to that as well. Under that particular grant that we submitted for, we now are able to be funded for all student meals. Now that even those that those that qualify and other students that are in need at this time that do not necessarily qualify, we are able to be funded for them in this unique situation and with this grant. So that's very, very helpful, and also it allows us to make sure that we continue the service as long as possible. And then just the additional information, the steps we're taking and considerations, these are things that are you're very familiar with that are a component that have been out in the Friday board updates, and they are things that we continue to look at each and every day, and is ever-changing, new things, and there are a lot of things to be looked at. So I know that we'll be starting to look at teacher evaluations. I saw Brick sent an email today that had some information on that of just some of the things that they're seeing across the state as people are coming to grips with what are the next best steps on that. And so we'll be looking at all that as we move forward and actually even touching base with our union to to look at that because there will be an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that will be created, and that will be then approved and signed off by both the district and by the the union. So that will be an important piece that we'll be moving forward and working together on. Any questions on this?
Well, that MOU, is that just for teacher evaluations?
Yes, it is. Yeah, that would just be for the certified teacher evaluations. Yes.
And then I see in here that you said development of communication for third quarter grading period and grade postings.
Yes.
Any idea about closing out third quarter if we're gonna have a fourth quarter or just, I mean, I know, I know it's still kind of like, how do we assess students?
Yeah, and I will send a document tomorrow to the the board and share that with you. It's something that we've been working on and some decisions need to be made as our staff return from spring break. But as is the grades up to and through March 1st, all of those for third quarter will stay as is, that's been graded and entered, those March 1st up through the end of the quarter, which actually ended on March 20th. Those will be all the all of the pieces that have been submitted by students will be graded, posted, and included in the the, I'll say, the final grade average. But those that are in not turned in or incomplete, those will be left blank and will be not part of the averaging process, and that's for the benefit of our students. Often, you know, if a an assignment was made and they, the teacher sometimes will come back and say, I still don't have this from you, then they get get that done and get that submitted. Sometimes it's in the bottom of their bookbag and, oh, you know, on a shelf in their their locker or stored in the back of a folder and somehow did not get something submitted. And so we just were really giving students the benefit. And so then we will be closing out on third quarter grades. And the items that they have, there will be no zeros that will be submitted from March 1st up through March 20th. They will just be left blank if they do not have those particular pieces from the students. So students will be evaluated on those things that were submitted and were graded and posted. As we work toward the fourth quarter, we are working through that. One of the big things that we're doing is really working toward the Google Classroom, and that's a really important piece, all of our distance learning, and I will let Mr. Verhoff, that's coming up next. And so I'm going to, I know it's embedded in this plan, but I'm going to kind of let him talk a little bit about that. It's a great piece, and we've been working a great deal on that. But as we move through fourth quarter, that's going to be a big and important piece. I'm really connecting with administrators and superintendents across the state. There's a variety of things that are being looked at for fourth quarter. So we're still working on that, and we'll make sure that we inform our district and our families and students and teachers as soon as we have more finality on some of that. Any other questions? Thanks, Corinne, for that one. Okay, I think we'll move on then to the second item, which is distant learning and remote connectivity. And with that, you have an attachment as well for that. And that's your distant learning guidelines. And so we've broken that down into the expectations for learning, our responsibilities of our teachers. And there's another piece. Yes, and another piece here with our workload recommendations. This is, and so this will give you some information, Mrs. Dahl, about we're looking at for breaking it down at six through 12, 30 minutes per day for our core areas, and no more than 60 minutes for our AP courses, and then we're doing one hour per week for the electives. And then we look at our second through fifth grade. We're doing for English Language Arts and Math, 30 minutes per day. Our Science and Social Studies, they're going to be incorporating that second through fifth as much as possible in the English Language Arts. And our specials, our art music, PE, physical, physical education, library, those kinds of things. We're going to be doing a weekly rotation that will be an hour that they will do with that. And then for our K1, we're doing some weekly lessons, just activities for completing, you know, their work, and that will be projected out, and their specials will also be doing rotation of one hour maximum per week on that. And then we really begin looking about if one of our staff members becomes ill, how that's going to be handled and and how that load is going to be picked up within the grade level or the team and the department, and also looking at technology needs and procedures and making sure that one of the big things is about connectivity with our students to remain connected. And Mr. Verhoff, anything and everything you would like to add to this? He's put a great deal of work on this.
Sorry, I needed to unmute there, but I guess the thing that I would like to reinforce is that, you know, we're dealing with, as school districts are across the state, an unprecedented situation here. And I think what we're trying to communicate to our our staff and to our students and to our school community is that we still want to provide that student connection, we still want to provide meaningful learning experiences for our students, but we have to be, we have to reset our baseline, we have to be realistic, and that it's not going to be business as usual. We're trying to take an entire curriculum that is meant to be taught in a traditional brick and mortar school and now converting that online, and we're we're taking pedagogy and methodology that teachers have used for decades and now asking them to to change. And we we realize that that is, that's a cumbersome process and and that it's going to be difficult for some. And so we're working with them and supporting them in the best way that we we possibly can. We've set up professional development opportunities for for staff. We've reached out into our networks and and are trying to add additional professional development. But we also don't want to over overload our staff as well in in the situation. But we want to make sure that we're providing the best support that we can. This plan went out to staff on Friday, and they've been working throughout this week to prepare for the launch on Monday.
All right, any any questions for Mr. Verhoff or myself?
Thank you for that document, Mr. Verhoff. It looks very well covered. And I heard Dr. Lally, the superintendent of Dayton City Schools, say on the news this morning that it's like having a whole district of first-year teachers as we move to a complete online learning because I think we just have to allow our teachers and our staff a lot of grace in the next few weeks because, like you said, Mr. Verhoff, this is not the way we were taught to teach, you know, in isolation. So thank you for your plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have a comment to to that? This is this is Ann.
Go ahead.
I think too, I mean, you know, of course, nobody foresaw this or planned it or wanted it. However, you know, there's always a silver lining. And I think it's really, in a way, the silver lining is that we were being forced into something that we're not accustomed to, and should down the road, God forbid, there's another event, whether it be a school building fire or hazmat or tornado. In a way, this is, it's it's really allowing the opportunity to get skilled at an alternative way of educating. And so I think that's the benefit, if you will, that's coming out of all this forced change. And may not, you know, digital technology, we talk about how we want to prepare our children for that that world, that global world and future. Well, you know, we're doing it now, so I I see the benefits in this.
I would agree with you.
And more than just meeting, you know, our our role in the in the immediate term, I see the long-term benefits of it.
I would agree with you 100%, Mrs. Akor. I I would say that this is going to expose our teachers to some different methods of delivering content to students, and we may see more of a blended learning type experience for kids as a result, where there there is some flipped classroom and flipped instruction taking place. As we all know, as human beings, we're we're social creatures, we crave that social interaction. And I think teachers especially crave that social interaction. And so nothing is going to replace that that face-to-face contact. But I I would agree that it's going to expose us to some different processes and and methodology that could benefit us in the long run.
Right, and it should we should we ever get forced into another crisis again for whatever reason, you know, we have more preparedness. This this won't, you know, that won't be our first run then. We've we've been through this, so. There's benefits.
Right, and and I absolutely would say that we have been seeing some great, you know, I call collaboration among our teams, helping them have a little bit more expertise or just ease at working with some of this remote access piece, helping one another. And the ones that are seeking, it was fun, I was in a webinar today that actually happened to to be on Zoom meeting, and several of our teachers happened to be in there as well. And that was, it was great because they were, you know, buffing up their skills and thinking about different options that they would be potentially using with their their classroom instruction here in next week. So, yeah, I agree. It's it's a bit of a steep learning curve right now for a lot of things, dealing with the stress and and the busyness in a household and still conducting lessons and or those on the other side still completing lessons. So we're all in in a new area, but I I do think that people are working hard at it, and I think the intents are very, very positive and strong.
And thanks to all the administrators working so hard to keep this together.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, we've got a great team. All right, then, the next item is job description and compensation study, and that connects, of course, with our Batel piece. We had as recent as today, a conference call, remote piece, teleconference with Tom Griffith, who is with Batel for Kids, and he really, he uses what's referred to as smart pages. So that's another new piece of technology that is a little bit different than, you know, a Google Doc. But it, once again, it allows us to see that, share it and and work with that, providing input and also seeing the progress that's occurring on this particular task. We are set up for another meeting that will again happen next Tuesday, so we're trying to stay on on cycle with that. There's some things that will be coming to us in the next few days, and so then we'll be responding to that and getting that queued up so that some decision-making can be made then when we meet next Tuesday, once again remotely, trying to keep that as much as possible on schedule. One of the pieces that we particularly liked about Batel was the feedback and the interviews of a random selection of our staff that would just kind of connect with job descriptions and analysis. And so those now will need to be done remotely, but they are are doing that and doing it successfully in in other districts and with other firms, and they have full confidence that that will work with us as well. So we will be working toward that and know a little bit more about that next week when we meet. Mr. Stevens, anything you want to add with that? Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, can't hear him.
You press the mute button, you gotta.
Got it.
I was just saying, it's been very nice to be able to stay at home and talk with everyone using the software. Really have to thank Carrie Prawl for the work that she's doing on this project as well and making sure that everybody's staying on task. Overall, I thought credit covered it very well. I'm really looking forward to the results and make, and hopefully we can get something good for what what we're paying for the service for, so.
All right. Any questions on that for us?
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so we when we originally started this with them, I think it was two years ago, part of it was they were going to come down and meet with us in person. Now, I know that we've got, you know, with the COVID-19 going on, but what specifically, for the money that we've spent already, I think it was $15,000, they had all of you write your job descriptions, is that correct?
Yes, we we did. It was a a type of a survey, it was electronic piece that we submitted information on. Yes.
But essentially, they just said to our employees, tell me what you do all day, and you guys got that information back to them?
Yes, we did.
Right, okay. And so then, for $15,000, what has Batel done specifically?
Well, they're, my understanding, and Mr. Stevens, please jump in. My understanding is that they do, in a sense, like a cross-reference of all the information and other seeing with other jobs that are similar, but also then looking at what essentially is occurring within our district so that when we do a reflection, for example, when I say a reflection, when we do an attachment to a contract, it is a description of that job, and so to make sure that it is aligning with what the duties are of that job, that's why the follow-up with the interviews and the feedback will be very helpful, particularly as questions arise, and then there's be, there will be us reviewing different things. There's a formal, a whole new formal format or template for the document. It's different and much more updated than what we've had before. And so there's there's different parts to it, but that that's that would be some of the difference. Now, when you're talking about the total fee, until we see the total package of all that's provided, it it's hard for me to really address that. But Mr. Stevens, anything that you would want to add with that?
Sure. All of the job descriptions that were filled out by the staff were sent to me, and I forwarded them on to the, and I can tell you that we had every, I mean, I mean, we had surveys that were barely filled filled out, we had surveys that had pages filled out, I mean.
Right.
And so their job is going to have to be to wade through everybody that is in the same position and make sure that they're capturing the services that are being done by these staff member, members appropriately. I'm hoping that when this comes out, we can learn what staff members are doing the same jobs and who's not doing those jobs, and we can figure out how people really should be classified. This is definitely something that they're taking time to look into. Now, when we spoke this morning, we were talking about the treasure job description, and they mentioned how there's, I think he said there's currently 12 treasure job positions open across the state. There's always a just description of that, and but you have to wade through all of the gobbledygook and make sure that they get the important functions in there. And and I think they're going to be able to provide us with the with a a quality product. Hopefully, if they don't provide us with that quality product, that's the great thing about how when the board said we need to have this in phases, that would, that were all all relationship with that if we don't feel like we got what we paid for.
Yeah, okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on that? All right, let's go on to item D. This was one that was requested to be put on, guidelines and expectations for board communication with the Uh, this was one that was requested to be put on, uh, guidelines and expectations for board communication with the public discussion.
Mr. Ellen, since it was your ad.
Well, I wanted to just open up this conversation so that we could establish what those guidelines should be so that we clearly all understand when we receive correspondence or when we receive comments during a board meeting, what will be the protocol for responding? Uh, and in some circuit circumstances, I know that we're going to develop some guidelines to when we direct the treasurer or the superintendent to respond on our behalf. And how will we then be copied on that? So that sort of opens up the conversation. I'd be interested to see how you all.
Sure. How did you do it last year when you were vice president? Let's just start with that.
It wasn't very well established. We talked about as board, we talked about it as a board early, probably in the school year, probably around October. Um, and I think it was the consensus that most communication should be directed to the superintendent to respond. Uh, but we didn't really clearly answer what to do when we are all or not copied, but directly an email just to the board. So I didn't see, uh, there were times when I saw the president respond, but I felt like that was something that we as board members all knew about. And we haven't really established those guidelines this year.
So I know as recent as uh, even, I believe that was today. Some of the times the days ran together, it was today or yesterday. But uh, that there was a communication that was to myself and to, I know, uh, Mrs. Dunaway. And I'm, uh, was that to the whole board? I can't, anyway, uh, we had, Mrs. Dunaway and I did have conversation about that. Uh, did come to a consensus that we thought that that would be good to put on potentially an April board meeting. And then I just inquired, would you like me to reply? Would you want, like to reply? And she indicated to me that, you know, I, I, I will. And so that, that's good. We're on the same page. We've conversed about it. Uh, I know sometimes it's, it's difficult because timing is what it's, i- is also very important so that we don't have too long before a reply gets back. Uh, some things that are pretty complex and you need to gather information before you can reply. Uh, and then I know there was something that was recent that came through. And when I, I did reply back, but I only did that to uh, Mrs. Dunaway and I think Mrs. Dahl, because I just wanted to be very careful with the sunshine law without doing business. So then I did follow up with an information only, and this did like a two-sentence, I believe, to the board. And uh, so that's how I kind of handled that. That does make it complex because we do have to be careful that we don't begin conducting business right in a meeting setting.
I think one of the outcomes that I, I think that we, and, and you can speak on, on your own behalfs. Um, I think we want to avoid the absence of any communication or response when uh, we receive some sort of correspondence. Typically, it's an email that goes to all of the board, but not necessarily to the administrators. So I just want us to all agree on how we're going to address that. I, you know, individually answering, we have to preface by saying that we're not responding to, on behalf of the whole board. Then again, we ha- would have to assemble in public to come up with and, you know, something to respond and agree on how we would respond. And then that adds time. So uh, it's.
I, I actually, if, if, if you, if you're uh, just bleh. Okay, so when they send it to all of us. And depending on the concern, if it's like um, they're trying to express their opinion or their emotion or whatever. I have always responded, I've created a new email and responded. Um, so that I don't reply all or violate those rules. And I always make sure that I state that it's my opinion, it's not a board thing. Um, if there's things where they want, what is the board's action going to be about this or that? Usually I let Greta or Dave respond. A- and I don't reply to things that are, they're looking for a, a board position, like our stance, you know? Um, because I can't speak for the board. Like you said, Joellen, it has to be something that is spoken about in a public meeting. So if, if it's my personal opinion, I'm, I make sure to state it's my personal opinion. I never try to uh, reply for the board.
And that's kind of how I feel because I guess, I guess, Joellen, you're asking myself and current specifically because we're the president, vice president, I could be wrong about that. But the way I handle it is if somebody emails all of us, then they have a right to respect a reply from all of us, right? Because we all got elected, we're each twenty, twenty percent of the board. Now, if they reply to just, I had a situation that came up. Um, I, I had to call Dr. Comf because she said she reached out to two board members. And I was the one that responded, I'm not really sure. So I said to her, because it was, it was something that, information that could be shared with all the board members.
Just second to you. So when you say she, you're not referring to me?
No, 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 yeah, a, a taxpayer. Yeah, okay. And so then I, because she reached out to just me, I specifically asked this person, do you want me to share this with the entire board? Because sometimes people reach out to one of us, but they don't necessarily want to reach out to all of us. So I just kind of tried to do a judgment call on that. And other than my grandfather's funeral last Friday, I think I, Lynn Davis had sent me an email. And I think I just barely, I left at six o'clock in the morning, I got home at ten PM that night. And I, I can't remember if I replied to Lynn Davis on Friday night at midnight or Saturday morning. But I did apologize. I said, I'm so sorry. I always respond within twenty-four hours. I did not tell that person I was at a funeral. But all I said was, you know, please accept my apologies for not following district protocol of twenty-four hours. Um, if somebody emails me in the five years that I've been doing this, they can pretty much get a response within twenty-four hours. So I don't know, did I answer your question or did I not?
I would be in favor when an issue comes to all five of us, if everyone else agrees. I would be okay with us agreeing that you respond with a response as the president, acknowledging receipt of it, that we've all received it. And then you're responding by directing a response to the superintendent or the treasurer or to whomever. You know, y- you would direct who would respond to it. So it'd sort of be like a canned statement to say, I acknowledge and receive on behalf of the board your concern, your email, your, your letter, your questions. And I have directed them on behalf of the board to the superintendent to reply by blank date. And then in this case, she would respond and then copy us back. And we would know that the issue's been resolved, or at least acknowledged and answered. Now, there could be circumstances that then lead for you to say, on behalf of the board, I will be adding this as an agenda item to the next meeting. And in that, you could copy all of us because we would know then that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, like I just did that this week, a couple of days ago. Much doing everything you're discussing, Joellen. And one thing I don't ever want to do is I don't ever want to take away somebody's right to respond to somebody. Because we all got elected and we're each one of, you know, we're twenty percent of the board. So before I was a board officer for the prior four years, if we received an email to the entire board, I felt like it was my duty as an elected official, that person could have voted for me, that I owed them a response, whether they voted for me or not. If somebody reached, remember, I will respond. I feel like that's my obligation to doing this job.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Teresa.
Okay.
Suggesting that oftentimes we get asked questions or there, there seems to be, the author is seeking a reply. Now, I can't reply for the board. I can only then preface by saying I can reply with my own opinion. And I'm not going to come up with the answer because it needs to then, then be decided on behalf of the board.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Simon.
So, thank you, Mrs. Core. The, the um, our policies have some guidance on this, but I agree with, with Joellen that there is some issues. Related to, to kind of some outlier. First, I think everybody's made some great points. One, we are elected officials and if we wish to address the public or public expression of our, our own opinion, we certainly should do that and reply to an individual person. Uh, but we do not want to copy all the board members to buy or the, the serial meetings or engaging, conducting business uh, outside of a public meeting. And so first thing, second thing, we have to identify that this is not the view of the board, the school board, its administration, that it's only reflecting your opinion, doesn't reflect it in anybody else or the district itself. And then do that. Now, if somebody's sending us an email and copying everybody related to records, public records request, um, I think that that's something I was wanting to talk about on this too, is that like, for example, there was a, a taxpayer who made a public records request in February. And we didn't reply until recently, understand that we were getting some information up there. But um, I didn't realize that we hadn't replied. And, and I don't think our delay in reply was inappropriate. I want to make sure that's clear. We had to get some additional information because of the, the content requested.
Oh, Simon, so, no, I, I, I'll cop up to that. I had gotten the information and just forgot, honestly.
Well, I mean, ju- forget that. I guess the um.
I still had to get the information.
Yeah, I mean, maybe two weeks or so to delay.
That, those requests take longer than, you know, twenty-four hours typically.
But the point, the point I'm trying to make here is that um, it'd be nice if we had an understanding of how to handle, like, for example, I know we're going to get a bunch of emails now from a lot of open enrollment parents. And feeling is, if they're asking my personal opinion, write to them an individual statement. If they're asking of the legal effect or questions relate to how that's implemented or, you know, exceptions. My feeling is we send that to the administration and then they handle it on their own.
That's how we've always done it, yeah. I mean, in the past.
And so, but I guess it would be useful to me, I think, and I would recommend.
Sure.
Especially given the, the, the fact that we're going to be acting remotely here, is to get um, maybe a, an opinion from, from Lampy that identifies what, what, how, how, what are, under our existing policies, what's covered under replies, under email, et cetera, how we're supposed to handle it. Some practical suggestions, pragmatic, that would be, be compliant with the law. And maybe even a video chat like this or webinar with him where we can ask questions like, what if I get an email that says this and things like that? Because I think that it, these.
I'll own this, Simon. If you want me to, I'll own this project. I'll reach out to Dave and.
And I think the other thing too, I'd like to understand, is, is how, as a board or as a board member individually, when, I think we need to, to, I didn't see a policy for this that really identifies it in sufficient detail. Who contacts the attorney and at what time and what requests can be made of the lawyer? As I, there's, I've seen a lot of opinions coming from Dave. I love it, by the way. I, I, I think getting opinions is a good thing. But there's a lot of times where there's opinions being provided on or suggested courses of action that I feel like, I'm like, well, where did that, where was that initiated and who, who initiated it? I feel like we have some consistent policy application as to when we're requesting stuff from our legal counsel. And, you know, when, when an individual board member can, when the president can, and when the administration can.
I know in the past, it is the rule, the, the rule has always been that only the board president and board vice president could contact legal counsel. But to me, I, I mean, I feel like all five of us are adults. And if you have a reason to call Dave Lampy, be able to call Dave Lampy. I don't feel like it's my right to say, hey, Simon, you can't, especially you, because obviously, you know, you're an attorney. But I just, I just feel like we're all adults and I treat people like adults. And if somebody feels like they need to call Dave Lampy, then my expectation is they'll call Dave Lampy and get their answer. And then my further expectation, out of respect to the entire board, if it's something that the entire board should know, that that board member would send an email and say, hey, I just, you know, had a fifteen-minute phone call with Dave Lampy and blah, 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 blah. If it's something that all the board members should know.
Well, I, I'm not aware of any policy that says that it's limited to the president and the vice president as far as.
And I, I don't think there's a policy.
That policy one seventy-four addresses that. And indicates that the, the school board, the, the board members can, blah, let me see here exactly what it says.
I think that we should all be, if you, if somebody needs to call Dave Lampy, then call Dave Lampy, right? I mean.
No, I don't disagree. I think that it'd be nice, like um, like to me, if, if it's a, if it's a question of procedure or question of how do we accomplish Z? Like to me, we being the board, how does the board do this or what? That to me would be something that I feel the board as a whole should direct that question. If it's, for example, if it's Dr. Comfort or, or, or Mr. Stevens saying, I need some legal guidance related to the administration, they should be able to do it. If it's a board member individually who has a question related to their own specific compliance, like let's say they have a conflict of interest coming up in a board meeting and they don't know how to handle it, then do that individually. That's the type of stuff I'm talking about. Because I think that what we could create unintentionally is, is a conflict of interest between individual board members' opinions and agendas versus the school board. And we, we can create a problem for, for Dave Lampy, Bricker, whoever our attorneys are.
Sure.
This policy would help mitigate that potential possibility.
I think it's a professional courtesy.
Cut off.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Sorry, what?
I think we should be going through you, Mrs. Dunaway. It's a professional courtesy as the president.
That's fine. I have no problem. I answer every email. So if you don't want to reply to an email, just say.
No, no, no. In response to speaking to the attorney.
I, I honestly, Joellen, I really, I don't want to get into that whole Open Meetings Act. And when someone calls me and then you call Dave, and then if I have to discuss it with somebody else. Personally, I, I respect that, but I, I respect you all as adults. If someone needs to call Dave Lampy, then call Dave Lampy. And then it becomes Dave Lampy's thing. It says, you know what, Joellen, or whoever, right? This isn't really, I, Dave Lampy's going to handle it.
I think, I think you misunderstood me. I'm saying, as a professional, professional courtesy, if I'm contacting the attorney, I need to be informing you as the president.
Okay, I re- I appreciate, I appreciate that.
That's all I'm saying.
I appreciate that. And I'm sorry, you keep getting cut off.
Thank you.
It's okay.
I think what we, we, we're, we're kind of twisting two issues here into one. But I, first of all, I wanted to support Joellen's uh, interest in having a little more clarity on board communications because I'm looking at policy one four eight, public expression of board members. And I agree with Mr. Patri. It's, you know, it's, it's really vague. But one thing that I think, may I suggest, could be helpful to all of us, no matter how we work this out, is a, is a box flow chart. I think, you know, if you start up there and then you just follow the arrows down, it will probably help unify us more than divide us. And then if we have to revise that as we go, as we learn. Because you take like an, an issue of open enrollment, some, you know, somebody emails all of us. One member's on this side, one member's on that side. You know, that affects how you communicate. And so I think maybe a flow chart would, because, you know, it's quick, it's easy, we can have it right by our computer. That's, that's on the communications. And I do very much agree with Mrs. Dunaway, you know, we, we are, and, and Mr. Patri, that we're, we're elected. So you know, we have, I think, a duty to respond to, to some extent, in some fashion, under some cover. I think it's rude when people, you know, whether you pick up the phone or you give something written individually or as the body as a whole. And then back to the attorney's side, I just wanted to make a comment. In the interest of tax dollars, don't forget that we have access to wonderful attorneys at OSBA, Ohio School Board Association.
That's a big point.
I've already, and it's free, we pay, we pay upfront, one fee.
That's a great point.
We can chat, chat, chat with them all we want. And I have found them to be extremely helpful on several different issues I've had. They, I've found them to call back very, you know, they, they were expedient and sent me the things I want. I, I really like those attorneys over there. And then if it's still unresolved in your mind, perhaps the um, the root of the board attorney. But just in a, in the umbrella of cost effectiveness, for as much as you can do, I would suggest reaching out to the OSBA legal team.
I, I, I second that, Ann, but let me just add one thing. Please know that if you do call them, it's not like calling Dave Lampy. There's no client confidentiality.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I get that. You're right. And that's a key, that's a key distinction. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Dunaway.
But I agree, they're wonderful. They call back within, typically within an hour.
Yeah, there's some generic, there's some generic things, you know, that you need to ask, like, hey, is this, if I did this, would this be a violation of Open Meetings Act? If I, you know, and I found them to be very resourceful.
They are.
And I think that, that kind of exemplifies, I feel that I like your flow chart a lot. And kind of your box flow chart related to communicating with the public, how to get with the attorney, where, which one's good for the OSBA, which one's not. With the attorney, which ones are good for the OSBA, which ones not? Um, I think that those things will help do a lot of different things. You know, one. Reduce the amount that we have to pay on an attorney. Uh, for opinions that could maybe be general questions that are more like, just generally, what's the law on this?
Right.
OSBA attorney versus a fact-specific privileged issue that you need to discuss. Result in, in a conflict of interest of our council and a board member with the school board, et cetera. So I think that flow chart would be pretty. Pretty useful. And I think that it's worth to me, especially with the fact that we're going to be discussing things remotely through email. To have those types of charts prepared by our, our own legal counsel to, so that we can, then now we have, we have this laminated flow chart. My mind is laminated.
With a hole at the top with a string on it.
Put it around my neck.
We have a laminator. I volunteer. I'll laminate everybody. That'll be my job.
What I'm concerned about, though, is like, right now, we, we have just received an email to the five of us and it's, it has questions in it. And, and that's where I struggle, like, how do, do we, do we respond with a generic response saying we acknowledge it? We'll put it on the agenda and come up with a response. I'm not sure if board meetings are the appropriate. For us to do that. I'm also okay with delegating the response to Mrs. Dunaway and Mrs. Doll. Helping us. But somehow I just want to make sure that people get a response to their questions.
Right.
And sometimes it's not resolution. Sometimes resolution needs to go, make it into a, you know, into the. A future agenda for us to discuss and resolve.
And then again, with that general guidelines, communication flow chart as well, maybe, you know, where I think we're. I think we're going to be busy at work sessions. That's what I think. We've got a lot of work.
Well, so I guess. Do we want to? Actually, President Dunaway, do you think it's worthwhile then to? To move to, to send some of this to Dave Lampy to give us some flow chart creation related to our policies and how to handle this stuff? Or is this something?
Yes, yes, no. Let me, I'll reach out to OSPA first, because I'm sure we're not the first board to want this. And they might already have something, so it doesn't cost us anything. Other than my free lamination services. Out to OSPA. And if they don't have anything, then I'll gladly reach out to Dave Lampy. And see if there's any himself or any of his other attorneys that have done it. I mean, I think that's the simplest way to handle it.
And, and may I make one suggestion before we reach out to Lampy? I, I love the idea of OSPA first. But maybe also, you know, put together some of our thoughts too. I just. I'm sure Mr. Lampy would be pleased to do all this for us, but I think as much as we can curtail the expense. By doing the footwork, you know. Boots on the ground first will be better than, and then clean it up, refine it, revise it, legalize it, whatever.
So, go ahead, Joellen.
Questions. So, I mean.
One more time, what?
How do you handle when there's questions?
Yes, I, I, that flow chart, I think we need to start talking about the flow chart for it. And I think the type of questions, because there's certain things that absolutely should just be forwarded on. Uh, if Mr. Stevens and I are not CC'd on it or even directly requested. That it, whether it's a curriculum issue or whether it's a public. That we should, we should be the ones helping to answer that or. Uh, addressing if there is a concern, because it may be something that we need to actually work with a particular building or. Or something like that. Uh, but other types of questions then may be absolutely. Uh, you know, more, more toward the board and something that they. Or as individuals, how you feel about it, but whether that's something that would be a workstation discussion or something like that, depending.
Right, because at the top of your flow chart, you can, you can have your three or four or five boxes. And within each box, that category of communication, like you said, is it something? You know, that was directed to the entire board? Was it something that was directed to the board with a? Just start the flow chart and break down the categories. And from there, you flow down to the direction of where you need to go with it.
Right. And I will also say, Joellen, like, sometimes if I get one, we had one last week. And I never, I never reply to anybody other than Dr. Comf or Mr. Stevens. Like. If it's a Gary issue or a Mr. Verhoff issue, I don't just forward that to them. What he was, I sent it to Dr. Comf and say, here's the email that I received. Um, you know, who do you think would handle this? And then she sends it on to that person. That person never gets it from me, ever.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I'm sure.
I was just kind of telling you what my process has been. I mean, I've only been doing this, you know, three months. But please know, if there is ever an email that's addressed to all five of us, that I always answer within twenty four hours.
Mrs. Dunaway, I do think that that has been working well for us. You know, forwarding that and letting me know. And then I've been able to reach out to the individual that works with that particular aspect in our district.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Why not add this as a, a standing topic for your agenda meetings? So any email that has come through at.
Well, that's a great idea.
With Dr. Comf and with Dave. Sorry, Mr. Stevens.
No, that's a great idea.
Well, could draft a response and then just copy the rest. If I ever have a problem with how you've responded, I'll pick up the phone and talk to you about it.
Yeah.
I see that there's closure to the issue. And, and as we acknowledge, it's not going to be closure. It's going to be, you're going to respond. We have to add this to the agenda for the next meeting. But at least, you know, we can make sure that we're closing the loop on the communication, because. I think there is an impression, and I think you would probably all agree, that we don't respond. And, and.
Yeah, and I don't really, that.
It's not that we don't care to respond. We're often confused as to who is responding.
Well, no, I, I just, I disagree with that. I, I find that very offensive, because I've never not responded to an email. And I will say, and I mean, never. And when people say that our board is not responsive and our board does not, I'm sorry, I take that personal.
What I'm saying is oftentimes it's confusing as to who has responded. And then it seems like there is a lack of response. Not that you don't respond to every person that emails you. I'm not.
Well, I think we all do. We all respond, you know, I mean.
We, I think what Jo Ellen's saying, we just don't have a real clear protocol.
Okay, we'll work on it. We'll talk this to death. I think we're good.
Sorry, I don't want to keep kicking.
No, go ahead. My, my dead horse wasn't, it wasn't towards you, so go ahead.
It's okay. Um, the. So I guess we're, 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 what's the end result of this discussion going to be then?
Okay, so the end result is I'm going to call OSPA tomorrow and see if they have some, so. You know, an existing document, so we're not recreating the wheel. And if they don't, then. Anne's suggestion was that we kind of put one together as our own group. And then.
Start with, yeah.
To start with. So I guess we could maybe have that for the April twenty, we have an April twenty first work session.
So one of us is going to go through all the public policy, the public records, the public statements. All our policies in our handbook to figure out what our current policies provide and how we're supposed to flow through. And then suggests that this is what it is, and then maybe revisions to that. Because I mean, that's what we're talking, just like, for example, we have, um. Eighty three, ten, and we have, you know, the thing that Corinne just.
Yeah, correct, yes.
So like. I guess I don't envision any board member really having that type of time. Do we want to task that to the administration somewhere? Do we want to make that a task item for somebody?
I'm just going to say that the COVID virus, it's a little busy right now.
Exactly right, so.
I want to pop out here, but.
No, but you're right. You're absolutely right.
If you guys trust me enough, I, I will call OSPA. I will do my best job. And, uh, why don't, since Anne is on the policy committee, I'll kind of, I'll, because I don't want to talk to more than one, more than one board member. Because that's Open Meetings Act, sunshine law. So let me, let's, Anne and I kind of see what we get going on this. And.
I think Corinne's on the policy too. Maybe Corinne and I could work on this.
Yeah, or, yeah, I can get out of it. I don't.
Yeah, because you have so much on your, I mean, I don't want to volunteer.
No, that's great. And then my suggestion is going to be, then we can.
I, I just have one, a one note. Two people should handle it exclusively, because if, if.
Yes.
Anne start collecting policy to then send to you, Teresa, as you craft.
Or violate.
Yeah, so why don't you and Anne just handle it and, um.
I'm okay with that.
Talk about at the next meeting.
Okay.
And from my perspective, for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Is, is things to, to me that could use some clarification or. Communication with the public would include public records requests. And then in that, sometimes I get copied on a couple of record requests along with David Stevens. Sometimes it goes directly just to me. Or, or to the whole board. Like, I know we got, and everybody got an email today from, from a, a, a public. Person or not a public person, but a, a person. Thank you.
Get that, so go ahead.
The other thing is the, um, the communication with the attorney.
Okay, cool. Anne, did you write those two things down? I see you writing.
Yeah, I'm writing the public records request and then the what the.
Communication with Dave Lampy. But when, where, how, why on that?
Yeah, so it's kind of like two, but with a subpart on the.
So I guess I'm just a little confused why the public records request is a bit of a question, because ultimately. Uh, you know, Dave Stevens goes to the particular training and.
Right.
And that always handles that. So that to me, and, and I may be missing something here. But that one would just be a straightforward to, to Mr. Stevens and then just to reply to that individual. That I have made Mr. Stevens aware of your request. I mean, something of that nature.
I, I don't disagree with that. I guess what's unclear to me, Doc, is, um, if. How, how do, like, I, I, I was recently criticized, and I think rightfully so. Uh, for not having addressed a, a public records request or a, a bias, uh, one of our. Citizens, thank you.
A public records request? Whoa.
And so.
How do you address a public record?
It was eventually provided back, but I guess, do we have a system in place that allows me to kind of? Have a status update that way I can remind myself, oh, wait, did we ever get that done?
Usually public, I mean, I'm sorry, because I don't, maybe I don't understand. Typically, the public records request goes to Dave Stevens. We, luckily, we don't get that many. So the only time I've ever gotten one is if somebody copies me. Um, and says, I just sent a public records request to Dave Stevens, blah, blah, blah. I would say eighty-five to ninety percent of the time, just in, in my experience, I don't even know we get them. Typically, they go just to Dave.
I, I understand that. I understand.
Okay, sorry.
Concept of who they're supposed to go to, I guess, is if somebody's copying me on a public records request, I feel that. I have somewhat of a responsibility at that point. If not just the moral obligation based on my own code of ethics to kind of. Make sure that I'm not blowing it off. And I'm kind of making down on one of my things that I want to follow up on to ensure is satisfied. And so. My thought would be, like, for example, my own initial thought on this public record is that. Every meeting that we have, every public meeting, we identify every single public record request made and what our response has been. That way, I don't have to worry about following up on it. Uh, and making sure it's been done. And then it's, it's kind of been. Kind of brought to everybody's attention as well.
Well, let's get Dave Stevens in on this. Where are you, Dave Stevens?
Turn on your microphone, Dave.
Dave, he's out of my top picture. I'm going to give his picture up here.
I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I'm, I'm as confused as you. Because normally when we get a public records request, it goes to you, you handle it. And I don't understand. I guess I just don't understand, I'll be honest.
I've had three, at least three public records requests copied to me and emailed. All right, what I'm at is how do I know that that's handled? At that point, was copied on it. I get that David's doing it. All right, but how do I know that's handled?
Can you just call Dave and say, Dave, did you do this? Would that be simple? And say, hey, Dave, did you get, um, you know?
I'd rather not have to, to, every time I get a public records request.
Oh, okay, I understand.
By myself. What I'm suggesting is that we look at what our policy says relates to reporting of those. And if there isn't a reporting requirement, my thought is it might make sense. And I don't want it to, to, um, micromanage. Yours and Anne's review. But my thought is it'd be nice if every time a public records request is made, that's just kind of listed at our next public meeting. That way, it's, we got a public records request and then we've addressed it and here's where we are.
Well, I would say that some of those public records requests, people don't want them being known.
Yes.
If I the individual, but, but, but their public request is a public record.
Right, however.
I mean.
It opens the door for more public records requests, because other people are going to want to see those. Um, and Teresa, I do not agree with you on, we don't get a lot of public records requests.
We do?
Yes.
All kinds of public records.
See, I didn't, well, like, like I said, I don't know about most of them, because I don't, they go to you.
Some of them are very simple. Some of them are. Other ones. And they, go ahead.
If you're, if, okay. I, I, this is just me. If, if I do, if I request something, I don't get it, I follow back up. Do you find that people who are requesting public records from you? If, if, I mean, aren't they sort of self-initiating? Hey, where is it? What, what, what happened? I mean.
Right, so when a public records request comes in, I usually try to acknowledge them and state, I got your request. My understanding is this is what you want, and we provide that to you and we're able to get that taken care of. Uh, we have to provide a reasonable amount of time. Uh, the larger the request, the more time we can take in getting it. And then I try to get back to them. Now. Sometimes I have not returned a, a, something, because it's been put on the back burner, because there's a lot of things that I have to deal with. And usually, those people will respond and say, just checking in on my request. And I follow up and go, oh, thank you very much. I did pull some information together. Here you go. And, you know, it just depends on who you're dealing with, honestly. Some people are very cordial and. They understand that there's a lot of stuff going on in the financial department, and that's great. Other people take it personally. So you can get some pretty, pretty snarky comments and, and response. And you just have to let it go and just continue to do the best job that you can. And.
I think you've done a great job with them. It's not, it's not a criticism. I'm just saying that. I, I feel that our, our, we have a policy at, at, I'm looking at it right now, eighty-three, ten. On public records. I get that we've delegated this to, to you. And I guess maybe we'll put it in a Friday update. Doesn't have to be a public, at the public, maybe we include it as part of our Friday update.
But is it really that big of a problem that you need to add something more on somebody's plate? I guess that's what I, where I'm coming from.
Well, I mean, if you're just adding it as a line item, that makes a difference to me, because you're, if it's not on the, because. We have delegated a duty that we are statually required to do to our treasurer. And when, when it's, when a citizen asks for it and copies me on that, at that point. I feel that I need to understand where we are. So if it's not. A, a, a very quick, just, I mean, to me, it's just a, a matter of keeping a spreadsheet that you add to the, to the, to the Friday update. That says this was requested and it has been supplied or is in progress. Then I don't have to take any extra steps. It's just a matter of copying and pasting a line item on the Friday update. It's not that hard of a thing to do. If not, I feel like if I don't take, handle it, now I got to figure out what my legal obligation is. I got to research all that. Uh, instead of just making sure that we know it's done.
Simon, um, I agree with you. If we can do something simple like, um, a spreadsheet, line items, in progress, not taken care of yet. Um, maybe we can just list it by concern or by date. So it doesn't have to be even the, the name of the person that requested it, so that you can know if somebody complains to you. And they're like, Mr. Patri, I haven't received my information yet. Then you can easily say it's, I'm, I'm aware that you made a request. Um, our treasurer's in the process of gathering your information, because some things people ask for aren't easy at all to gather. And then it, it reduces the amount of back and forth and, and confusion.
You know, I, I got a simple solution, a Google.
I'm ready for simple.
Doc that everyone has access to at all times. It's a live functioning document. I'll just get it out there and invite all of you to it.
Okay, and so when you get one, well, in. Confidentiality and non, and anonymity, while I can't even talk this late.
It'll just be a request that came in, and that's all.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
It'll indicate kind of what they're looking for, emails or documents or whatever, and.
I'm not sure that public records requests are confidential or private, so if you make.
They're not.
Your actual request is a public record, I believe.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we wanted to use name or subject matter. I just didn't know how we wanted to, you know, identify it.
I trust that Dave can summarize it.
Yeah, I trust, I, I have no problem with it. Wasn't.
Mostly what, what Corinne said is, is true. If someone asks us and says, you know, like, I've asked for this. And I never get a response, that sometimes, you know, people generalize. At least we can say, you know, I understand that it, they're working on it. At least we can say, you know, I understand that it, they're working on it. It's a large request or it's difficult to pull together. I, I, I trust that you can put something in place for us, Dave.
So the only question I have is that by creating a document, you know. Whether that's with Friday board update or whether it's a Google doc that is, you know, living and breathing and you're able to access that and look at it. I mean, it does create another piece of information for a public record request itself. To look at all the kinds of things that's been requested and, and the, that sort of thing.
Well, I, I, I save them all in folders anyway. I've got them all in folders. Everybody that's requested something. And all the documents that I put together for it, they're still in folders. So. Somebody asked for the same document again, I just, I can forward it to them.
Okay.
And as far as another document being seen or the fact that it's now gonna be a public record, like, you're, you are as an individual. Asking for a public record to examine something that may not be discernible. And now you somehow wanna have some type of confidentiality protection for your actual requests. To me, it's kind of like. If you wanna get the information, why can't somebody else get the information?
Yeah. And I've done that before. I've had multiple people ask for the same thing.
Okay. All right. That's good.
Okay.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, so something that might be added to the Friday board update might be some sort of comment of. We received an email.
I would rather not put things like that in Friday board update.
Okay.
I think we were gonna do a Google doc, right?
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about public records requests. I'm just suggesting that we get some sort of update on correspondence from week to week, you know, like. Uh, we, we got a, we got a inquiry that went to the board. And the president has directed Dr. Kumpf to respond on Friday. Just that way I know it's been addressed. That's what I'm looking for.
Does anybody really have time to deal with this weekly, Jo Ellen? I mean, I, I, I don't, I know Corinne doesn't. I don't think Dave or Dr. Kumpf do. I, I guess I really. I don't even understand why this is such a big issue. I'm, I'm so sorry. I just don't. The last thing anybody needs right now is more work. Who has time for more work right now?
I'm not suggesting more work. I'm looking.
If you have people who aren't busy and wanna work, then have them do this. Because nobody involved in this has time. That takes a lot of time for Dr. Kumpf, Dave Stevens, myself, Corinne, all of you guys are gonna email me. Saying, here are the emails. I got this. I mean, this is gonna get crazy, crazy.
I think you're making it much larger than I'm intending.
Yeah, I think you could very easily make a process to, to make that automatic essentially where you, you copy. Create a, you create another email. Board communications and you copy it every time. And then all you have to do before the board update is. Scan and print, print and scan those. It takes five minutes and it gets attached to the board update.
It, it somehow it just does, it sounds like it's gonna be streamlined, but I'm sorry, I'm with Mrs. Dunaway. I'm afraid it could, could grow and, and be another piece that, that you, you know. I will just have to, I'm all willing to make sure that we do follow up. That, you know, our citizens that are reaching out to us, that they feel that they have had a response. And, and there's times that when I receive it, I make sure it's really more of a building issue. That the building needs to address it or they're closer to the situation. They're gonna have the most current, you know, information about it. So. Uh, uh, it's just there's, at times, there's so many things coming through. I, I just, I'm not for sure how streamlined that we can make this, but we'll take a look at it.
I'm not suggesting to add more work. I'm looking at how we can close the loop on the communication. This week we got an email. You told us that you were giving it to Gary to respond. I'm not gonna go into details about it because that's not appropriate. So I'm either looking for some sort of response on a Friday board update with the questions being answered. Or I'm copied on the response to the person who submitted the, the email.
Well, and once again, we just have to watch the sunshine law. If it was sent to all and the cat, that case it was. You know. It's, it's not returned to all. So, uh, yeah. So, yes, and it was dealt with.
Back to the person who wrote the letter.
Yes.
That's what I'm looking for. That right there. Did the person get a response?
Yes.
That's really what I'm looking for.
Uh, excuse me, I think I dropped off here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. I can't see you.
Yeah, what happened? I, everybody froze up and then I.
That is so funny.
So I, I'm sorry, I'm here.
How long ago, Anne?
No, my iPad got tired after a while. I, I don't know, but as long as you can, I can vote and everything and do all that.
Okay, let's rewind about an hour.
Can't see me. Uh-oh, did we freeze again?
No, you're here.
Okay, you can't see me?
You and hear you just fine.
Oh, you can see me?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, okay. I can't see myself. I don't know what I look like. That's scary.
Use the scroll button.
No, there isn't any. Something happened here.
Yeah, there's a little arrow on the right-hand side. It's white. It's beside the person's picture and you can scroll it over to see all of us.
Nope, it's not there, Teresa.
Great. She's using an iPad and every, every application is different on every device.
Oh, bummer. Okay.
Okay, we're fine.
Okay. Anything else? Are we good on this guidelines and expectations for communication? Jo Ellen, or is there anything else? All right. Go ahead, Dr. Kumpf.
All right, we're on IME, staff vacation and staff holiday pay discussion. And I know that, uh, Mr. Stevens had. An attachment with that. Mr. Stevens, I'll let you, uh, conduct that discussion.
All right, so, um, uh, a few months ago, I mentioned to, uh, President Dunaway and Vice President Dahl that. We have recently been making some new hires in the district. We have a new EMS coordinator. We have a new transportation director. We have a new. Maintenance supervisor. Uh, and I've got a new payroll clerk. One of the things that I have been consistently hearing. From all of these people is that Tip City Schools vacation policy. Is la, is falling behind, uh, from what other districts are currently offering. Uh, and not just the vacation policy, but the holiday policy as well, or, or the holidays that are allowed or allotted. Uh, I mentioned that I'd like to have the board, um, just have a quick discussion here. To see if we're okay with me, uh, going forward and looking into changing this policy to. Um, expand the number of holidays that we currently have. Right now we have seven. Uh, they are listed in each and every one of the salary schedules that are provided to the employees. And then. Um, you know, when we talk to other staff members before they come to work here, they say, well, we have ten. I had one person say we have twelve where we currently are. Um, and so. Some of the ones that I'd like to add, like right now, um, some places they have the Christmas Eve. Um, the day after Thanksgiving, Good Friday. Those are three additional holidays that people have expressed that they'd like to have. I do know that most of the times people are taking leave if. Those, I mean, they're taking leave instead, so people aren't working those days anyway. For the vacation policy, what I have issues with is our, I think the vacation policy was originally enacted. If ORC, I don't know if I put it on that attachment or not, but, um. Well, I didn't put the date on there, but I think it goes back to the seventies. And in that policy, it talks about the employee. Waiting a year and then receiving so many days of vacation, depending on the length of their term, uh, the, the length of their service that they've put in. But any new employee would have to wait a year before they receive vacation. One of the things that I'm, would like to suggest that we do is instead of having the employee wait the year. That like their, their sick leave, which is accrued on a monthly basis, that vacation be accrued on a monthly basis and. Added to their balance so that they could use it as they have it. Um, I, I know that. For, for employees that have been at a location where they've had, uh, where they've had vacation for years. And then they come here and they're told, I'm sorry, you have to wait before you can take a day off. You know, that, that, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that can deter some people from wanting to come to Tip because of the vacation policy. I used to have four weeks and you're gonna tell me I have to go back down to two. So I'm just looking to see. Uh, if the board is, um, willing to support me and, and looking forward into. Establishing a vacation policy that is, uh, more aligned with what people need in this time. Um, or with, with, matches what other districts in the area are, are offering. So.
I'm with that. I think it should be an accrual anyway.
Okay. And that would actually make things a heck of a lot easier when it comes to accounting for the vacation. Right now, on a monthly basis, we have an Excel spreadsheet that lists all employees that are, uh, eligible to receive vacation. Every month, at the beginning of the month, we go through it, determine who has reached the next year. And the, so they're now able to accrue their vacation for the previous year of service. And that is updated on a monthly basis. When, if it was done on a. I, I mean, if the system just automatically did it, it's no big deal. We do it the same time we do this, the sick leave accrual. So. That would just make things easier.
Yeah. Uh, just from my viewpoint of some recent hires that we've had that have been in, uh. I'll call it, uh, upper certified, excuse me, classified levels, upper classified levels. Uh, that they really, uh, it is difficult for them to. Need to have this waiting period before they have a vacation day. Because they may be of an age that they have a child that's graduating from college and just different things. Uh, that they actually, if they, particularly if the graduation is out of state. Uh, that they, instead of just taking a, a one day off, a, a, a personal day, you know. That they would actually take a couple of days and travel to that state and spend it, you know, with the graduate. So. Uh, we have had a couple of situations where they, they were leaving a situation where they did have. Vacation days and when they came here, they weren't able to have those for, you know, this longer period of time. So. It, it was something that they had to work through and I think initially it caught them off guard. They didn't really realize how difficult it would be. Not that they needed lots of days, but by, if they would have been able to accrue some, they would have had one or two by the time it got toward. Spring instead of waiting the entire year.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with you looking into this, Dave. Um, I think it makes sense. And I think this is something that an HR. Person would have probably caught, um, a long time ago because I think that most employers do a vacation accrual. Um, monthly, like we do sick, sick days as well.
I mean, we're basically following the bare minimums of the, uh, ORC right now. A couple, two other items to mention, uh, right now, ORC says an employee has to be at the district for ten years. Uh, during their first ten years of employment, they earn two weeks a year. And then when they get to ten years, then they, they qualify to receive three weeks of vacation a year. And then when you get to twenty years, you have four weeks of vacation in a year. Um, and so, uh, I've had employees come and say. You know, ten years is a long time. And the other thing is, I, I, I guess I should say this, uh, a lot of those places, well. Most other school districts, they have unions for their classified staff members. And these are things that they've. Uh, negotiated with to, to have their employees feel like they're being, uh, heard and, and are being respected. I, 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 I love the teachers' union. It's been really great. We've had a great relationship with them. But I'd like, I like to just think that we take care of our staff. And, uh, I think looking into these would really help. I think it would go a long way with a lot of our staff members. And I don't wanna ram.
I would welcome a draft. When do you think you can have it ready?
Uh, I think we could send something out in the Friday board update, uh, and, and, uh, just say, these are my ideas that I wanna. Propose.
Then put it on the agenda to vote.
That would go to our policy people. That's Corinne and, and Anne.
Yeah, I guess we could, yeah, we'll do that first.
Well, I, I, being on the policies, like I show up when Norm does the stuff. I don't, um, review it. Like, that would. That would more be like the superintendent to make sure it doesn't violate any other policies.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting a draft of the policy that you all are submitting for us to.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to have two people, we're gonna have to have two reviews of it anyway if it's amended policy.
Yeah.
It's about time. I was, I, I, I couldn't believe it when I found out you guys didn't have, um, Christmas Eve off. I thought it was like.
That was terrible.
Yeah, novel stuff, right? Yeah. That was horrible.
Okay, Dave, so get that ready. Get that together for us and get it out there in Friday board update. We'll add it to the. April twenty-seventh board meeting, correct? Or do you wanna add it to the work session and then the board meeting?
Yeah, we could probably, uh, review it at a work session and.
Okay, so put that down for April twenty-first and then we can vote on it on the twenty-seventh. Does that work?
Fine with me.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Stevens?
Sure can.
On, on these, these non-teaching employees, are, are they employed year round?
Yes, to receive vacation, they have to be employed at, uh, at least eleven months out of the year in a row. Um, it's, it's pretty much all full-time employees.
So they're not breaking over the summer like, like maybe.
No, no. These are two hundred and sixty-day, two hundred and fifty-eight-day-a-year employees.
And you have to work ten years? I mean, to get.
You can get three.
Eleven years before you're at three weeks?
Yes.
I, I, I don't know, but to me, that seems like. Behind.
Yeah.
I, 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 and even, yeah, I'm sorry, I did, I'm used to more maybe better benefits. But that's like a long time and then twenty-one years for four weeks? Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think that there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of, uh. Row in that pop, in that policy. So, uh, we'll put something together and, uh, we'll go from there.
Do you think the policy will also addri, address, uh, like ceilings, like accrual limits?
Yes, uh, I, that's definitely something.
All of that.
Yep, it'll, it'll address all of it.
Okay, great.
I, I think that. I think that offering the, the monthly accrual may have people be more willing to. Take a more days off and, and not just.
Yeah.
To say, hey, well, they gave me ten days and I'm used to not using any of it, so.
Does that information even come out like on their pay stub that they can see how much they're accruing each pay period?
Yep, it shows what was used and what they have.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
Yep, awesome.
That's it for me.
All right, that was our last item.
A clarification question on Zoom. The Zoom group chat. Is that being broadcast as well as the meeting and discussion or is that not being broadcast?
That is not being broadcast.
Then I would suggest that we read that out loud. So that it's not a violation of the Public Meetings Act.
Yeah, it says somebody.
I will read that out loud because I was, I, I thought it was just everybody could see it.
We can all see it. Simon just wants to make sure that everybody watching can see it.
Oh, yeah, I just, I thought everybody could, so.
Oh, go ahead.
Mine, it's, it's popped up there. So, um, I sent board policy one, zero, one, one, eight. And, um, it says the board declares and thereby, and thereby reaffirms its intent to maintain two-way communications. With citizens of the district. The board shall keep them informed of the progress and problems of the school district. And of the citizen, and the citizens shall be urged to bring their aspirations and concerns. About the district to the attention of this body, establish policies and make decisions on the basis. Of declared educational philosophy and goals. Act as a truly representative body for the citizens in all manners related to programs and operations. The board recognizes that ultimately, that ultimate responsibility for public education rests with the state. But the Board of Education has been assigned specific authority through stature. And the board shall not relinquish or fail to exercise that authority. And then I also sent public records, PO eighty-three, ten. Um, and that's all I sent. I didn't put that actual one in there. And then I also said, I can't see me. And then Teresa, you said something.
I know.
And that was our conversation.
Oh, yeah, she goes, I can't see me. I go, I know, I couldn't see her either. I didn't know. Oh, yeah, she goes, I can't see me. I go, I know, I couldn't see her either. I didn't know.
Dave, just print that and make it part of the transcript.
That's a good idea.
Do you know how to print that, Corinne? Is it?
Hold on, let me just copy and paste it into my.
That would be awesome.
Perfect.
I don't know how to print it.
Yeah, I didn't think about that until now.
Cause I can see it on mine, so.
Yeah, I, I see it on ours and, and I was like, if somebody's watching at home, you never know.
Yeah, it, ours, Corinne, it goes at the bottom and you have to hit it and then it doesn't, yeah.
Aw, dang it, it's a different computer, hold on.
And there's gonna be stuff like this, I'm sure that we're gonna have to kind of keep our eye open for.
Gonna learn, we'll learn.
Yeah, we all can try to do the best we can.
Like Corinne said, we have to give our teachers grace right now. We have to give ourselves grace too.
Exactly right.
I mean, my gosh, we're, we're, everybody on, on your end is working twelve, fifteen-hour days and it's a lot.
It is a lot.
Let's try to be nice to one another.
You guys are doing a great job.
Yeah.
I couldn't see you, Anne.
What? You can't see me?
I motioned that we adjourn this meeting.
The upcoming meetings.
Oh, okay.
Come on. You're trying, what are you trying to do tonight? Okay, are we, are we done with that? Can I read the upcoming meetings?
Absolutely.
Well, the next work session will take place on Tuesday, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Uh, well, here's a question. Should I read it as is? Cause that's not true. Because now we're doing these all, you know, telephonically.
I'm noting that you're, you're stating that these are now online.
Okay, gotcha. Perfect. The next work session will take place on Tuesday, April twenty-first. The next regular Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, April twenty-seventh at six PM. Um, there you go. Because we're not doing the building by building thing anymore due to the COVID nineteen.
Right.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion, we adjourn.
I second. Motioned and seconded, Dahl and Dunaway.
Dahl.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Patri.
Yes.
Or.
Yes.
That's it.
Right, thank you.
Bye, good night.
Have a good evening.